Council President Montes.
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Present.
Councilman Afante.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Present.
Councilwoman Correa.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Councilman Agliosi.
Present.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Present.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Present.
Councilwoman Miller.
Present.
Councilwoman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Azayan.
Present.
Councilwoman Salvatore.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yurden.
Aye.
You have fifteen present, none absent. You have four.
In location is where I am led by my Marine assad.
Good human peace. Assalamu alaikum. Begin to name for our mercy benefactor, worship of the Rima. Praise and thanks be to God, the Lord of all worlds. Our prayers and our words are extended to the victims of the recent attack on the Muslim community in Israel. This is a human tragedy shared by people throughout the world. This outrage based on our hearts and our minds. I thank you for God for the invite to show this body to offer this invitation before sustaining membership. Therefore, I pray for God, creator of all mankind, grant us guidance as we face the growing menace affecting our world as strengthening as climate change. The climate change affecting on our sense of morality and decency, our moral and our spiritual lives. Growing climate of hatred and bigotry. Grant this to salvation, lawmakers, ability, power, and beliefless to resist the negative influences of all people ideologies seeking to destroy our unity, our goodness, and our stability. City of poverty celebrates diversity. We ask for your blessings, guidance, and help during this session. God bless our city and our leadership. Amen.
Your pleasure, Mr. President.
Lord, I am the United States of America, due to the Republic which stands united, divided, indivisible, and liberty in the land of God.
Approval of minutes, item three. General proceedings number seven of the regular meeting of the City Council held on March seventh of two thousand nineteen.
Madam President, Leader Ryan, who will apply the number for second? Motion to make a second to vote on item three of this in favor?
Aye.
Avoted by his honor and mayor, item four. Communication from his honor and mayor, agreed on March fifteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Leader Ryan, motion to waive the reading of item four, please. Second motion. Motion has been made as second with the reading of item four, and the item is not listed in favor.
Aye.
May I have it?
Ordinances, second reading. The following ordinances were in City Council of March.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of items five through eleven and pass for the first time on a vote. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item five through eleven, and is passed for the second time on a vote. Um, Mr. Clark?
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilman Afante.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Agliosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye, items five, six, seven, nine, ten, and eleven, no, I have eight.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurden.
Aye.
You have fifteen ayes and no nays on all items except for number eight, which has fourteen ayes and one a, one a, uh, fourteen ayes and one a. Uh, the several matters are passed for the second time. Presentation of ordinances. Councilwoman Miller, Council President Montes, Councilwoman Anthony.
Leader Ryan. I make a motion to waive the reading of item number twelve and refer to the committee on ordinance. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive item number twelve. Um, what's about it?
Uh, Madam President, I just wanted to, uh, share a few words on item number twelve. I'm just really excited that we have this opportunity to play a leadership role, um, in the management of the state. So that's, that's, we all know there's, there's just about, uh, three thousand province families who depend on vouchers. Um, there should be statewide thirty-four percent of apartments would be affordable and accessible to those families. Unfortunately, for every fifty bucks, seven percent are accessible. And so, you know, we've been having this conversation, councilwide, statewide, about expanding accessibility, expanding affordability. And this is just one piece of this, of this puzzle. Um, and this is something that Massachusetts has been, uh, has enacted since nineteen seventy-one. Um, and so I'm excited about the state level, uh, legislation and the relevant work that the leadership over there.
Madam President.
Thank you for your suggestion for the sponsor, the co-sponsor.
Councilwoman Miller, okay, and also one that Castillo, who has. Madam President.
Thank you, Council President. It's good to see the council tackling this issue. We've, uh, supported the legislation at state level for years and we need to continue that for that. I think that this is a great solution to make sure that this law is a statewide law, not just in my province. And I think just based on the introduction of the ordinance alone by Councilwoman Miller, you can see that unfortunately discrimination directed in section attendance is a lot of well. Uh, there are comments that have been made in public forums, uh, that, that actually call for separate eviction procedures to, uh, file in section attendance. Which I can't think of something more discriminatory than that, um, as a, as a response to this kind of proposal. And those kind of things are, are wrong and hurtful and we need to make sure that we're providing, um, opportunities for options to all of our residents and also the city statewide. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion has been made as second to refer the, uh, to waive the reading of item twelve, and is passed for the second time on a vote.
Councilwoman Ryan, item thirteen, Councilwoman Ryan, Councilwoman Agliosi, and ordinance regarding the service held in March as Irish-American and Italian-American heritage.
Madam President. Leader Ryan. I make a motion to pass this for the first time on a vote and refer to the committee on ordinance. Second. Motion has been made as second to pass this again for the first time on a vote. And instead of you refer back to the committee, you refer to the committee on ordinance. Uh, Mr. Clark?
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilman Afante.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Agliosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller. Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye, if there's no objection, the co-sponsors are the two representatives, the co-sponsors.
No objection.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurden.
Aye.
You have fifteen ayes and no nays. The matter has passed for the first time on a vote and refer to the committee on ordinances.
Mr. Clark, there are other council members of the item listed as co-sponsor. Councilwoman Irvin, entire city council, and President Johnson.
Presentation of resolutions. Item fourteen, Council President Montes, resolution authorized for approval.
Leader Ryan, make a motion to waive the reading of items number fourteen through twenty-three and refer to the committee on finance. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item forty-three and this item, uh, refers to the committee on finance. Uh, Councilwoman Anthony, Madam President, I'd like to review this on my item. Mr. Clark, do you agree on it?
Not noted.
All of them favor?
Aye. Out of your government's support, I will accuse myself of voting fourteen.
Madam President.
I cannot say the last.
Fourteen of them?
I guess by number fourteen.
Not noted.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-four, Councilwoman Correa, resolution requesting the province police to immediately enforce section fourteen of eight, storage of commercial vehicles.
Madam President. Leader Ryan, on, I make a motion to, uh, refer item twenty-four to the special committee on, uh, the state. Second. Motion has been made as second to, uh, the first item, and I'm going to refer it on the state. Favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Madam President, you can share, Councilman Taylor, Councilwoman Ryan, article sponsor.
Not noted.
Um, Mr. Clark, I would like to reduce that also, uh, agent from item number fourteen.
Not noted.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five, resolution requesting director of public works.
Leader Ryan. Madam President, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of item twenty-five and pass on a voice vote. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item twenty-five and instead of you passing a voice vote, all does the favor?
Aye.
Both, may I have it?
Item twenty-six, Councilwoman Harris, Councilman Afante, Council President Montes, resolution endorsing urgent passage.
Leader Ryan. Madam President, I make a motion to waive the reading of item twenty-six to refer the special committee, I just like to. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item number twenty-six and instead of you referring to the committee on financial aid of the. Uh, Councilman Yurden.
If there's no objection, I'll be considered the co-sponsor of item twenty-six.
Councilman Yurden, Councilwoman Irvin, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Miller, uh, Councilwoman LaFortune.
Not noted.
And Councilwoman Anthony.
Not noted.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-seven, Councilman Salvatore.
Leader Ryan. Motion to waive the reading of item twenty-seven and pass on a voice vote. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item twenty-seven and it will pass on a voice vote. All of them favor?
Aye.
Both, yeah. Madam President. Leader Ryan. Motion to waive the reading of items twenty-eight through thirty and pass on a voice vote. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item twenty-eight through thirty and it will be passed on a voice vote. All does the favor?
Aye.
Both, yeah.
Madam President.
Chair, may I?
Yes, now you have to vote on item twenty-eight and accuse myself of twenty-nine and thirty, please.
Mr. Clark, did you hear that?
Not noted. Committee on Finance, Councilman John J. Agliosi, Chairman.
Madam President, Leader Ryan. Motion to waive the reading of item thirty-two and pass for the first time on a vote. Second. Chairman. Aye. Item thirty-one, waive the reading of item thirty-one and pass for the first time on a vote. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item thirty-one instead of you passing, uh, for the first time on a vote. Second.
Council President Montes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Okay.
Councilman Afante.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilman Agliosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Yurden.
Aye.
You have fourteen ayes, one a, the matter passes for the first time on a vote. Uh, transmits the following with recognition, saying you settled the approved.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item thirty-two through thirty-six, pass on a vote and refer back to the board of contract. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item thirty-two, thirty-six, it will be passed, uh, on a voice vote and instead of you referring back to the committee for the board of contract. May I have it? Chair, may I?
Speaking on item thirty-two, this is from our council colleagues. Uh, item thirty-two, if you have a package, you're most into PFS, up for contract LLC. This is the contract that the city hired this contractor to collect tickets in municipal court. Uh, why this particular contract was flagged, I want to thank the internal order, the treasurer. Um, actually, the treasurer, he, he already legislation ten years ago, the internal order picking out PFS four. What the issue there is this, there's a PFS one, two, and three contract. Those three contracts, you know, municipal court, acting tickets, etc. And part of those contracts where the city law says that, and those contracts have to be approved and ratified by the city council. For some reason, for some mission. PFS four, the exact items that was in, the target of the contract, was specifically stated, council have to ratify the contract. Was mysteriously taken out as well as the letter from the law department, from the lawyer. Couldn't find the one that said, the lawyer who signed the contract to form, who went along with the idea that the council, basically, they took out the, the council authority and ratified the contract. What is concerning is this contract has been a year and a half old. Now, why? Because the city only took a million dollars upfront in the contract. It took a million dollars upfront, executed the contract, and then if it wasn't for the diligence, or the internal order, the treasurer, he would not have found out that, that occurred. One, two, that the law of the land, council to ratify these contracts, the language was taken out of it. So, the Board of Finance Committee, um, they, uh, they explained that what they couldn't find, the letters supporting it, and they showed the fact that they already, that the arrangement of the early balance, companies been doing the work, the passion in half anyway. So, unfortunately, they're doing a post-ratification because they're, they're doing the job. But, the law department, um, the solicitor didn't, oh, and he didn't tell me that they, they are a state. Um, I'm just gonna let it, I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt. But what's concerning is that the attorney who signed the contract, is an attorney who's been with the law department for many years, over ten plus years. And they know the law, they enforce the law, and they need to protect, not only the man's rights, but all of your rights as council members. And if your city's office doesn't protect your rights votes, then no one will. I know right now you're not thinking it's a big deal, but there's got to come a day in your, in your tenure as a council person, where you're gonna say, who do I go to address this problem? Who do I go to address a violation of the city charter? And the point, the, yes, they're supposed to be doing that for you, the city's office. And if they're not there doing their job, you won't be able to do your. So I just, as my council colleagues, unfortunately, you know, to support the ratifiers for this time, but it's been doing that with the law department, and I know, I don't think the many members and the internal treasures office are working on this project. Thank you.
All of them favor, all of them vote. Voice vote. Motion has been voiced vote, Madam President.
Aye.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Both, yeah.
Transmits the following with recognition, saying you settled the received, item approved.
Madam President. Leader Ryan, uh, motion to waive the reading of item thirty-seven, through thirty-nine, and receive an approved. Second. Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item thirty-seven, through thirty-nine, and it is, uh, received and approved. All of them favor? Both, uh, Councilman Ryan.
I'm back to the, uh, to the personal expression.
Chair, Councilman Ryan.
Uh, tonight, I'm going to have a lot of, by me at the screen, I just want to mention, because she deserves a lot of credit, to my thirty-seven, committed, rest of her time. And I'm going to say, St. Joseph's Day is Tuesday, and I should know one of the parts of St. Joseph himself, who is very fair, we go here, take it, and they're there. The way I look at it is, we gotta be fair, we don't need anything else in the way. We've been together a lot together, thirty-seven years, we've seen the good, we've seen the bad, we've seen the better. But one thing we and my wife have always did in thirty-seven years, we've been honest and we had, it was always been here, and we've always stuck together, and I'm proud to say that. We got two beautiful children in thirty-seven years, I got a weird friend, and in the last three years, um, I just want to say one way, uh, she, she gonna come, I come talk. But I really, and I just mean that, I really did my best for me and rest of our sheets, and talking in thirty-seven years, thank you.
As my beloved President, I think important to it is Mr. Nowhere and the audience. Come on out, come on out to this side. Come on out. And you're still on here, I guess you're on here. You're on here. Ladies and gentlemen, a member of the new board of license, she know, get the dollar, families, she knows support the city, and I think she should, uh, met, anybody, uh, get a chance to say hello. And it's the torpedo, this time is over, director of public works. Now, I was gonna be honest, because she will be looking to us to help us in our name, until we have a license issue. And he will be calling, because there's no asylum for him. So now you know, for all your constituents, uh, also the people on the other branches of the government, it looks to you to help us in our job. So thank you for, so thank you.
Thank you, we just might have also another, another, so we can, and I'll keep it going, or then I'll be doing this very, right after. So, um, yeah, actually, the landlord, at least as a fourth, he will be here. And since when you were here, prepare now.
Help me count down. These two ladies are fine, I have to say. By the way, the King of Finance Committee, they express such passion and commitment to what they want to do and achieve, and have, what they have been doing, to everyone is amazing. Uh, they, they don't get paid any, they spend a lot of time managing that, so you have my constituents control of us, thank you very much for doing it, thank you. Congratulations.
Transmits the following with recognition, saying you settled the received, item forty, communication.
Leader Ryan. Motion to waive the reading of items forty and forty-one, may I have it? Motion has been made as second to waive the reading of item forty-one, and it is, uh, may I have it?
Aye.
Committee on Claims and Penalties Suits, Councilman Nicholas J. Narducci Jr., Chairman. Transmits the following with recognition.
Leader Ryan. Madam President, motion to waive the reading of item forty-two, and I make a motion to deny a vote. Second, I'd like to, uh, also pass the part explaining vote on this.
For the administration has submitted this agreement for civil law. Committee on Claims and Penalties Suits has submitted this, um, recommending denial. So a vote in favor and a high vote would be for the denial of the administration's, uh, agreement. And a vote nay would be, uh, in favor of the administration agreement opposing the recommendation for denial.
Great, so can we just, so, so, because the motion has been made as second, um, the motion is denied, item forty-two. Chairman, does he have a ratification?
I, I was just saying, because it makes, because the committee made a, made recommending denial, is that correct? So what would be, I would say, a motion to approve recommendation, because they denied. Versus denying and denying. I just thought, is he doing a long answer?
That's the man, Narducci.
My friend. I know all, all the discussions, and the, to that executive session, so, okay, we'll see what, uh, executive session. But I haven't recommended denial of this, uh, to an ancient agreement, whatever they were calling it. Uh, but I wanted to be perfectly clear, we didn't, uh, take any sympathy, it's been a, for sympathy, vacation, I don't know. So I do that as a chair, I claim, I don't recommend a denial of this particular.
Uh, Councilwoman Ryan, and President, fellow council members, I rise to speak against the denial of separation agreement. And I too, a member of the committee, Claims and Penalties Suits, and I cannot speak about the specifics of this case. But I will say that it's common upon this council to consider possible financial exposure in this city. My opinion in that, although this city could be responsible if it can smell the money, defend a possible suit. So I urge my council members to consider that before they cast a vote on this matter.
Leader Ryan. Madam President, I would like to.
Madam President, I would like to withdraw my motion on item forty-two, and ask the deputy leader to withdraw the second.
I will withdraw my second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the committee on this matter.
Thank you, I wish. The motion has been made, a second, to approve the recommendation of the committee, item forty-two, and instead of...
One vote for...
I'm voting for it, may I just say, I, for a moment, I'm sorry, I'm just here to read my, my speech earlier, thank you.
Listen, Chairman, if you...
Madam President, I'll actually, probably speak on this matter, I didn't intend to be meeting, I don't want to have an executive session, but I do, my sense of this is where I am. What I'm concerned about is this, and I, and I expect my counsel college position, saying if we don't vote to approve this proposal, the city has a potential exposure. Well, first of all, let me say this, what I wanna know is this, if, what I heard, in Scoto, was, is potential because Miss Bailey is African-American, she's a female, her husband is sick, et cetera, et cetera, has exposure, et cetera, which leads, by the way, to say, that once she relieved of her duty, or asked to leave based on one of those elements, and if she was, it's co-discrimination. Now, here's my concern. What I do, what I am looking to, that, let's, let's play out that hypothetical scenario, let's play out that something like that might have happened. So the city negotiates a deal with her, saying, here's money, please don't offer a lawsuit on discrimination because of potential or alleged evidence that shows one of those supports that. Well, then I wanna know this other part. If that is true, then the people who discriminated against this individual, are they still in city government? Have they been fired? Because my concern is this, if all we're doing is, if this is allegedly true, then the person or persons who did allegedly discriminate against this individual are still working in city government, which means next week, they're gonna do again, and then what's gonna happen? Are they gonna run out of bodies? So I like to understand, and I went to the new committee, and it never was related to us, did that happen? And if it didn't happen, then we should know if it did happen, because the problem is, you still have to root out the problem. That means the individual individuals who might have allegedly discriminated against another individual based on sex, race, et cetera, all the other elements, et cetera, is still in city government and in positions to discriminate. Now, why do I want to give her money this time and not root off that problem? So that's my, that's the first. Now, the inverse, if that didn't happen, and there was no discrimination whatsoever, then why am I paying, am I paying this individual because of race, sex, sexuality, et cetera? Well, that's not right either. So which is? Is the person, do we stop the person who's discriminating against city employees and still in city government? Or is it that we're just paying off people based on a particular race, sex, or sexuality, et cetera, et cetera? Well, either way, by the way, isn't right. So, I think it was typical, the, the council used to say all the time, if it's, sometimes you can not surely go, no, if it's good enough, we'll come back, maybe the thing to do is accept it. What we did want is that administration, the past quarter few years, has spent up many thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in these types of deals. Who wasn't, until the council last year passed the law, that created and put light on these issues, because you never know, and exposed these types of, let's say, negotiated ideas of settlements, or whatever reason about it. But the important thing is, maybe it goes back, they go back to the drawing board, and maybe whoever chose to create this potential deal, needs to further support why they need to do it. And the second piece is, if there's any sense of discrimination by anybody in city government who's empowered to hire or fire people, this government, if they are still here now, that person has to be, that has to be addressed ASAP. So my feeling is, I like to know if that, if that's the case, they don't have to give me names, but they just let me know that's all that happened. Were those assurances far forward? If they weren't, then you have a right obligation to know some of the people in the province. So I'm gonna support the committee's recommendation, because I think it sends a message to say, listen, if this is the case, either way, if you wanna give them a payoff because of race, sex, sexuality, et cetera, or the public, they know that, or you wanna give them, give them money because someone's discriminated against them, then we need to know that too. So I think what happens is the Lord Department, whoever did this negotiation, whatever, independent lawyer, attorney on this list, they convinced to a matter, they need to do a little more, a better job, explaining to their clients, which includes all of us, why we should do this. So I'm gonna support the committee, I think it's a very difficult task, commander, maybe, maybe next round, they'll give you a better explanation, maybe a better understanding, so, I support.
Madam President, I think that Councilman Aliozzy brought up some excellent points. First, we don't want to further any discrimination that may occur by city staff, however, I think allowing this to go forward, I would basically cost this city, many, many, could possibly cost it millions of dollars, where I would recommend that we refer this matter back to, back to the committees, so that we can ask further questions, try to root out the problem, rather than costing this city money that we can't afford, we need the money for many, many other things, and I think this just isn't a way to handle it, I think we should handle it in a different manner, not be exposed to a fair cost of loss.
My friend, if I just...
That's the man, if you...
Can we ask a question today? In our name, this, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, gathered just in my name, in my name, makes a hundred and fifty, that's my answer, of working for them at that point. What kind of mission are we serving? Our tax papers, committee, what we have to say, some of these people probably doubled their paychecks, or their properties, but yet we're getting packages for this way. I don't think so, I don't think so, so...
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor, my opinion.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, we should be a little bit more plain spoken about what this is. This is hush money. It's money to pay your tuna for, to be quiet, and to go away. That's what this is. You could call it a separation agreement, you can call non-disclosure, this is money to keep someone quiet. Is that the precedent that we wanna set? Is that the behavior that we wanna encourage? If you think that's what you wanna do, the next time a settlement agreement comes because a male superior sexually harassed a female staffer, then you'll vote the same way. Next time a couple of guys get together down at the garage at D W, and have some choice words for someone whose sexuality they don't agree with, and they get paid, that person gets paid to be quiet, you'll vote the same way. But understand what this is. This is paying someone not to say what happened and to go away. Thank you.
Counselor, my opinion.
I was, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support the view, and I, we have laws to protect people from discrimination, and as a result, as you all can see, the news was, it's very difficult for litigants to go through the litigation process, and it's within their rights to settle their claim, that's what's the force, we have a person in the protective class that has a claim, alleged claim against the city, and this council is about to disregard the recommendation of the law department, who does this for a living and looks at these issues. And when this council, which I assume will do, will approve the denial, does it, they are going to owe the judgment or the highest settlement that comes in here, and what's gonna happen then, when there's a lawsuit filed, and the plaintiff demands half a million dollars, or three quarters of a million dollars, is the committee gonna deny that too? Well, now we're gonna go to trial, and guess what? We don't know facts. The lawyers of the city have a much better idea of facts than anyone on the committee or anyone in this room. So when a judgment comes in for a significant amount of money, with all due respect, my colleague says that a hundred, or like a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, it is a lot of money, but it's also a lot of money when you use that to calculate a judgment, or someone being wrong from determining, and they're entitled for multiple years of that amount of money as a judgment, and then on top of that, the attorney's fees, because on the federal law, if the plaintiff is successful, the city will be also on the hook of paying the attorney's fees. Unfortunately, litigation is a difficult, difficult thing, and we are placed in a position to have to vote on that, and sometimes it's difficult to explain to our constituents the logic of it, and maybe the system isn't fair, maybe it's balanced too much towards plaintiffs, maybe it's balanced too much, too much towards defendants, that's not the point, this is the system that we have, attorney's fees are in because of the way that the law is written, and so, our job is to be responsible and figure out what's the message to the city, not to panic to our constituents, because it's difficult to explain to them what's happening, which unfortunately, what I think is happening, you know? So, I would urge my colleagues to send this back to committee, get additional facts about what's happening, before they take an action which is exposing the city to significant, significant judgment, and as well, it's just gonna really undermine our little bit more jobs, then.
Counselor, my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor President, I also want to say that I agree with both my colleagues, councilwoman Anthony, and the chairman, and your, but what we're going on tonight is a separation agreement, there are a lot of things that I brought up, about discrimination, et cetera, that is not what's at hand, and if there's any type of questions about why a separation has occurred, because that's what the language states, it's a separation agreement, then I also, I also agree that we should send it back to committee and ask them further questions, with the issues that we need, but we're, we're talking about things that we don't know are actual facts, so we should just be voting on the separation agreement, or send it back to committee to take additional information.
The matter, President, if I...
Counselor, my opinion.
That was a committee motion, we couldn't get the right, we couldn't get the right to the administration. We couldn't get it, we heard three, we heard two, we heard two, one of the reports that was written in the journal...
That's not, that's not just the last thing, I mean, yeah, thank you.
One of the other reports that was written in the journal was that this certain individual resigned. So the way I look at it, if you resign, you're leaving your job because you don't like your job, or for whatever reason, so, you wanna resign to your position, oppression, because that's the way it is, especially, oppression, not the only thing to do. So, okay, you wanna retire, you can retire, and then you can win fifty-five thousand dollars for that.
Chairman, if you...
Thank you, Madam President, just, I, because I think the committee didn't have a specific expectation of these things, one, the position itself is what they call a position that serves the pleasure of the mayor, which means, by the way, when you serve the pleasure of the mayor, and then it's, well, you know, go in a different direction, thank you for your, your time, and after that, and thank you for your debt, doesn't mean that after May does that, gives us a check, a separation agreement, that's not how it works, separation agreement implies something else, so, that's the politics of legal. So therefore, there is no rationale or reason for that position to have a separation agreement, because it doesn't call for, because it's a pleasure of the mayor, here at the end, that's all it is. Now, the second one is that, the interesting thing about what Councilman said about the lawsuit, he's, he's right, he knows the numbers, but here's the other thing, what I have to explain to my constituents is, is that, do I have to wait for a lawsuit that happens in the fire department? To allow a female fire, fire person to be discriminated for years? To allow the situation to occur? To allow the folks that were practicing the distributary practices? And when a lawsuit occurs? And then have to look out that distributary practices? Question is this, if this lawsuit accomplishes ruining distributary practices in the city government, that's not pandering to my constituents, that is protecting the people around us, because they don't subscribe to discrimination in their government. So therefore, they need to show if it is based on a marital law lawsuit, well, then they need to show that they have rooted out the distributary practices, so it doesn't happen, again, it's a two approach, and right now, I don't see any, anything that says that, whether the committee, or you can't, can't say, whatever, bottom line, it should have been expressed, either way, some form or fashion, but the point is, if it takes a lawsuit to finally get the distributary practices rooted out, then so we do, I'm looking to do that, I think the better thing to do is now, if the council supports the committee's recommendation, the Lord Department will now go back to the drawing board, they will contact each other, have another further conversation, and then you'll maybe come back with a better plan, which is, we have a different separation agreement, and also council members, we're going to executive session, this is how we're addressing, if there is alleged distributary practices, this is who was involved, and what would do, and how they all would be, when our separation services were done, we're not giving them, we're not gonna be giving them separation, by the way, they don't get any money. So, the problem is, you still have to solve the basic problem, so, until that happens, I commend the committee, let it go back, the Lord Department has to go back and do some homework, and as we always, the Lord Department, they are also advisors, they sometimes need more, they also need some understanding from their clients, that's what they need, and we wanna make sure there is no more distributary practices applied in city government, so, that's what I'm looking for, thank you.
It's simple, um, it's hard.
Counselor, the Santos.
Aye.
Councilwoman Anthony.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fonte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Correa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Aliozzy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Curran.
Aye.
Councilwoman LaFortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Miller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Narducci.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Salvatore.
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hurd. You have seven ayes and six nays, motion to deny passes.
Item twenty-four.
Question, nine, 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 six, nine, nine, six, days, motion to deny passes.
Thank you, Mr. Correa.
From the first desk, item forty-three, petition from the panel of Chase, the Land Department, two ninety LLC, forty-sixth Avenue Street.
Motion to wait the reading of item forty-three, refer to committee on Public Works. Motion has been made, second to wait the move on item forty-three, and I would like to move it home. For those in favor?
Aye.
Item forty-four, petitions for compensation for injuries and damages.
And President, refer to... Refer to the committee, place of residence.
Communications and reports, item forty-five, communication from the council, like the city clerk, they...
In a round. Motion to wait the reading of item forty-five through forty-seven, my seat. Thank you. Motion has been made, second to wait the reading of item forty-five through forty-seven, and it's time to send it to the meeting, for those in favor?
Aye.
Both, and, and...
Item forty-eight, communication...
In a round. Motion to wait the reading of item forty-eight, refer to committee on... Motion has been made, second to wait the reading of item forty-eight, and it's time to send it to the committee, and...
Item forty-nine, communication from the...
In a round. Motion to wait the reading of item forty-nine through fifty-one, my seat. Thank you. Motion has been made, second to wait the reading of item forty-eight, and it's time Motion to waive the second to waive the reading of item forty-nine through fifty-one, I think I stand to waive the seat, for those in favor.
Aye.
Presentation of resolution.
Madam President, motion to waive the reading.
Mr. Clay.
Item, presentation of resolution, saying congratulations. Item fifty-two, Councilwoman Antos and the members of the city council, resolution extending, congratulations.
Do you ready? Motion to pass item fifty-two, I wish for.
Thank you. Motion to waive the second to waive the reading of item fifty-two, I wish for. And that would also, happy birthday to Councilwoman Erica Harris.
Only a major.
Aye.
Thank you.
Presentation of resolution extending, memorial. Item thirty-three, Councilwoman Antos and the members of the city council, resolution extending, seventy-five.
Madam President. Motion to pass on the item thirty-three, I am bound to rise. Second.
Back wire please. Wire please.
Madam President, do you ready? I think there's no further business before, before the honorable body, I mean, I'm wishing.
Do you ready?
Before your general, before your general, you know, it's not a big deal, you know, so I have my technical here. We have our new, uh, new point in T M S, you know, over here.